Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin our meeting tonight. This is our meeting of Tuesday, August 9th. I'm sorry, 6th. Bear with me tonight. I had some dental work done and it's not fun. If anybody's had that done, it's quite a challenge. So, bear with me. I will do my best. So, this evening, we first start off our meeting, and thank you all for being here tonight, with our invocation. And I believe our pastor is here. Pastor Steven Ichiriu of Faith Community Church. And then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Please rise and thank you for coming tonight.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much that we get to be gathered here tonight to participate in the civic process here in the city of West Covina. We thank you, God, that we live in a city and in a country, God, where we get to participate as regular citizens, we the people, in shaping and generating the direction that our country will go. And so, we thank you, Father, for everyone who has gathered here, for our city council, for all the city officials who are part of this great city. And we pray, Lord, that you would grant us wisdom, that you would grant us insight and humility, Father, in our decision-making this evening. And that what would result from this is a city that is even more friendly for business, even better to raise families, and a place where people experience truly liberty and justice. And so, we thank you, God, for all of this. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the prayers to the flag of our nation. Ready, begin. Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the blood from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hurford. Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Setello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will ask our city attorney to give us a brief report out of closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there was no closed session tonight, but we do have a report from the last council meeting. At the last council meeting, we had an item in closed session. It was the claim of CGM Company. That claim was denied by a vote of four to oh. Mayor Sanderson was not present for the vote. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. And at this time, Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there is no change to the agenda, but I do need to point out that on Item 8, there is a change to the agreement, which I just wanted to -- that there was a memo that was handed out to you here tonight. And in Item A, in the first of the agreement, it should read, "The City of Industry owns and operates the industry MetroLink Station Parking Lot, which supports MetroLink rail services to downtown Los Angeles. The City desires additional Prop. A local fund -- return funds to assist in the maintenance of MetroLink Station and other Metro-approved Proposition A capital expenditures." And that is just a slight, minor change that was provided to us at the very last moment by the City of Industry, and they just wanted that minor change. In addition, tonight, I do believe we received an email regarding Mr. Steve Hurford not being here tonight. And I believe it is Mr. Steve's absence.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. With that, our next item on our agenda is our presentations. And I'll come forward, and we have a certificate of recognition for someone very important in the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I left my paper behind because I'm going to have the lovely Chris Freeland come forward and help me give the presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for helping out.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we're very honored to recognize an individual in our community. If I can call him forward, that's Boy Scout Matthew Alkazar. And as Matthew comes up, I want to tell you a little bit about this young man and what he has done recently for our community and why the city council will be recognizing him. So, I brought some notes, so please forgive me for a moment. Earlier this summer, Matthew approached the city of West Covina about a community-wide project that he could do for his Eagle Scout consideration. After discussions with the city, he decided that he wanted to do the renovation and the restoration of the senior center gardens over at our senior center. It's an area between the north and south wings of the senior center, which, over the last couple of years, has gone -- grown over a little bit. And we joke about that because over a course of about two weekends, Matthew and members of his Troop 443 spent time out there removing dead vegetation, clearing a little creek that's there, planning new drought-tolerant landscaping over there, as well as putting in new mulch. And so, we're very excited. The seniors have been over there enjoying the new gardens as well. And it's something that we're very proud in the community to have. We want to thank Matthew for his hard work because not only did he get most -- all the materials donated, but he also had the volunteers, about 30 volunteers, that he actually had to manage as part of his consideration for his Eagle Scout. So, we want to thank him and congratulate him on this effort.
With that, Matthew, I'd like to present you on behalf of the citizens of West Covina and the city councils, pleased to recognize you for your outstanding and dedicated community service for our senior center garden restoration project. And I want to compliment you on -- those are badges, correct? Okay. I'm -- that's amazing and how much time and dedication and what an outstanding youth of our community. And we really appreciate that you came here tonight to accept our recognition. Thank you. Okay, before we begin our communications, which is the next item on our agenda, I do have a little note here to reminding people about the National Night Out. I know our staff and some of our council have been running around to these events. And I just wanted to mention to those people, maybe, I don't know if they're still going on afterwards, but just wanted to make a mention of that. Next on our agendas are our communications. And we do -- oh, we have cards coming in as I speak. If you've never been here before, we have yellow speaker cards and some white, it looks like, because we've ran out of cards, at the top of the stairs. And please turn those in, fill your name in, and turn them into the city clerk. We have a five-minute speaking limit, and you can address the council on any items within the city's jurisdiction. The law allows that per government code section, I'd like to just read this so everybody knows before we start our meetings, 54954A. However, when you address the council on items that are not on our agenda tonight, we are prohibited from fully discussing those items listed in that government code section. So, and I say this because I want to make sure you all know we do care, we want to do what we can to resolve any issues you may have. So, what I usually do, too, is say the city manager's phone number, which is 626-939-8401, if you'd like to get in touch with us. And hopefully, we can help you with any problems you may have. Sometimes there's a tree issue or a curb issue or a drainage problem or whatnot, and we can handle those things. Also, I want to make mention that when we address -- when you address this council, per our municipal code, Section 248(c), just to address the council as a body and not individually. So, with that, that will help me assist doing the best job that I can in making sure that we get our stuff done tonight. And again, I apologize if I'm not able to talk really well, but I'll do the best I can. So, I will call our first speaker, which is Sharad Daz Shishkar.
Good evening. My name is Sharad Daz. You did a good job trying that name. That was very brave of you. I'm here because, first of all, I wanted to thank the council for approving the request of the condominiums to not allow that one person to build his property, what you guys did a couple of weeks ago in terms of that decision, I thought was very, very, you know, nice. And I really appreciated your vote on that. I have a couple of concerns. One of them has to do with the responsiveness of the city council. For the past probably three months, I've attempted to make contact with a couple of the city council members, and no one has called me back. And, you know, week after week, when I'm here at the meetings, you guys, you know, indicate that you're willing to meet with us, your constituents, to discuss your concerns. And, you know, not getting a call back is kind of -- it makes me angry, to be honest with you. So, I don't know what the reason is. I know you guys are very busy, but I do think that, you know, when constituents call, you should at least call them and say, "Look, I don't have time right now, maybe in a month," whatever it is, some feedback to the caller. The things that I wanted to talk with you guys about, if I were to discuss, if you did call me back, was the issue of gun safety. I'm very concerned about what's happening in our country on this issue and wanted to meet with one of my, well, particularly the mayor, to see about maybe joining a coalition of mayors, you know, against gun violence. I think Mr. Chung did respond to my email on that and was very kind, but at the same time, there was not -- I didn't feel that there was a resolution to my concern in terms of meeting with the mayor. And she declined, but never knew why she declined. So, really wanted an answer to that question, if at all today, if possible today. If not, you know, I'd be happy to meet with you and discuss it further. Also, a few months ago, I think, Don Overland came and spoke with the council about this issue as well and a gun buyback suggestion that he had made, which I was very happy that someone would make that suggestion. And the city council seemed to very pro that idea. And I think there was follow-up with the police captain sergeant, I don't know what the name would be. And they said that they were interested and were going to do something about it, but then the police chief left and that was it. And we haven't heard anything about it. So, I don't know what's happened to those ideas or plans to do a gun buyback through one of the stores, you know, in the area. So, I'd like some feedback about that. Yeah, and if there's any -- well, if anyone's really taking that ball and running with it in any way. So, I wanted an answer to that. Election integrity is the other issue that I'm concerned about. I don't -- I'm sure all of you know about Citizens United ruling, the, you know, Supreme Court ruling on, you know, that corporations are people, and that's allowing a lot of money to be floating into different elections, including city-run elections. And I really wanted to talk with particularly Mr. Hurford, who's going to be a mayor soon, you know, about that issue. Left him several messages, haven't heard back. So, I would like to have an opportunity to maybe discuss that issue with one of the city council members, particularly the ones that have been around for a while and, you know, so that there can be a discussion around that issue and maybe what we can do as a city to address integrity of our elections so that we make sure our democracy is, you know, still around. Let's see. What else? Okay, I think that's it. Basically, just a little disappointed about the lack of contact. And I would ask, you know, Mr. Hurford to at least allow me the opportunity to discuss this issue with him further.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. Chung, I get like hundreds and hundreds of emails, and I go through them, but I did not get a contact number. And so, maybe we can get that because I wasn't aware, and I apologize. I didn't get any emails, so.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
Okay, please. Thank you so much. I appreciate that because I would be more than willing to meet -- Councilmember Sykes.
Briefly, Madam Mayor, could we also give the speaker an update on the gun buyback program?
Yeah, I can give a brief one if you don't mind, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Yes. There is -- the police department is implementing a gun buyback program. They are currently, you know, they are currently talking with vendors. When I mean vendors is like they're talking with some, like a Target, and they're trying to figure out what's the best store that we can work with. But the gun buyback program is looking to be implemented within a couple of months, correct? So, we are -- that is moving forward. And there will be gift cards that will be passed out in exchange for those guns being traded in. So, and so, we're pretty close to doing that. And we're just, right now, we're just ready to implement it.
Thank you so much for that. Our next speaker is Leonore Carvajal. Carvajal. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call you forward first. And then, I mean, like I have a lot of cards, so I'm just going to have to go in order to the cards I have.
All of them together. My name is Lola Finley. I'm here and speaking on behalf of my neighbors and my family. We live near Ginrich Park, the cross streets of Woodgate and Courtney Circle. Nearest major is Temple and Amar. The reason why we're here, we want the city to implement an ordinance that Azusa has passed and Covina has passed that holds rental property owners responsible for their tenants and their property. Let's see. First, I'll tell you why we want this ordinance passed, and then I'll tell you a little about Covina's ordinance that just passed. In the past, we've had a crime rising in our neighborhood for about two years. A lot of us are years residents of West Covina. I'm from the 80s. We have people, the original owners, in the 70s and so on. So, we've seen the crime rise and rise and rise. The past two months, we've had an extreme increase. We've had multi burglars in our neighborhood. Leonore, the one that was going to speak, her house been broken in twice, once last Tuesday, once last night. The people who have broken have been harassing. They've gone three times today harassing them. And they broke in 1:00 in the morning while they were asleep. They were -- she's supposed to be in Hawaii right now, but she had to cancel her flight with her whole family to take care of this issue and be here tonight. We've had some of the residents here, they've had property stolen from their backyard. They've had packages stolen from their front yard. We have tagging. We have people shooting off guns. We have people that go into Ginrich, smoking pot, doing drugs, possibly selling drugs. The police came. We had a neighborhood meeting on Sunday. Fred Stotzky came. Lieutenant Serritos came. We talked about some of the issues. I spoke to Shannon Yahtzee today. We're going to make an appointment Monday, 4:00, to meet with them to address the paseo back there where they're tagging, where they're climbing the fence at. But anyways, one of the things, they did catch two of the people. There were multi people who broke into her home. She had large screen TVs, a lot of big things that two people couldn't do. She has a large wall. And they -- They have a large wall that they took many items from and across. They caught two of them. The person was on probation. He's from the area off of Temple, an area. This is why I want -- what I want to address. But this is why we want the ordinance, because we're having all these rental properties come, all these Section 8 areas that are people from -- in jail coming into our community, robbing, stealing from us, defacing our community. And we're just done. We've had enough. We've had enough of it. I realize you have a business that's in Covina. You're probably familiar with the Covina ordinance. So, I think there's something we need to implement ASAP. I know some of the people think it's Big Brother's, but you know what? I own rental property in West Covina. I own three rental properties in Covina. It's not Big Brother. We need to implement it. We need to do something now. Now, when we implemented it in Covina, within two weeks, we saw progress. Azusa, for many of us who've lived here for a long time, we all know the blight and all the gangs and drugs Azusa had. And now, we can see how beautiful it is. They have to work still, but they're working as a team, their city councilmen, their police. Our police came, and they're doing a good job, but their hands are kind of tied. They know that that's an issue, and they want to do something. With Covina, what Covina did, they implemented this ordinance. I don't know the number, but I can find out. I spoke to the members there and the three people who implemented. They have a process. They basically copied Azusa. We can copy their combination of both of them and then bring it into our city. And basically, what they do is they -- if there's an issue with the landlord, whether it's a single-family residence, apartment, condo, triplex, any rental property, what they do is they send them out a letter, give them a warning to address the issue. If they don't address the issue, they get a second letter with a fine. If they don't address it the second time, they get a third letter with a fine. If they don't address it at that point, they revoke the right for them to be rental property owners in the city of Covina. Now, we've done it to apartments. We've done it to single-resident homes. My rental properties happen to be in multi-home and single-family residence and apartment complex. And within two weeks of them implementing and getting those letters out, we have seen significant progress. So, I have a group of people here. We want this ASAP. I don't want any excuses, no ifs, no ands, no buts. I don't want to say here it's Big Brother. I'm a property -- rental property owner. I'm 1,000% behind it.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Speaker, I see there are five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. I can go ahead and, if it's possible, the way our ordinance works is that -- or not ordinance, but the way our process works is a council member would request this onto a "Mother May I" item to be brought forward, and then we can discuss it as a council. So, I would like to do that and direct our staff to bring this back as what we call a "Mother May I" item in reference to the ordinance because I do believe in accountability, and I agree with you. And I'm very sorry that you're having to deal with that in your neighborhood. I am glad that you got some response from police and you had your neighborhood watch. So, thank you so much, and we'll, you know, obviously, do what we can. So, I'd like to bring that back to our next meeting. So, thank you.
I understand. I'm empathetic to your work, but I still would like on the record for all the people to come up and.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I will continue to call. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'll go ahead and put that on the next agenda for discussion by the council.
Contact you personally. Do you have my name and number? Let me know.
Absolutely. Yeah. Can staff make sure we have her information, then we get back to her and let her know? Okay? Now, we have it on the card here. Right? Let me make sure here. Yes, we do. Okay. So, Leonore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Leonore Carvajal, and I've been a resident of West Covina for 28 years. And I am so upset because twice, they broke into my house. And I'm so scared. And right now, before coming in here, my husband couldn't come because they rang the doorbell and they left. And there was not a very nice guy, the one that rang the doorbell. We're supposed to be in Hawaii, and we can't. I'm so scared. I'm just pleading, please help us and do something for our sake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to look and see so we can get everybody. Is Ruth Rosa?
Yes.
Okay. Ruth Rosa, please.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Ruth Rosa, and I'm here just -- you already know what's going on in our neighborhood. We are really scared. I've been there for so many years. I never feel the way I feel now. And it's very sad. We're paying taxes. You know, we work very hard for our houses, for everything that we have. And it's very sad to see that people who we even don't know, they just go ahead and get whatever they can. And that's not right. So, that's why we're here, you know, because we need help, for sure. And we appreciate Mr. Sykes because he always listened to us. He always cared for us. And I wish that all of you are the same thing. You know, we need you guys. We really need you. We need the help, whatever you can do. I hope you listen or petitions, you know, whatever we need. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Our next speaker is Jose Gomez.
Hello, council. I'm here just to support the ordinance. And I also wanted to ask a few questions about -- I live at 1801 East Woodgate. And if you're familiar with that, there's a paseo that runs behind our home. And there's also a hill back there with the water drain, the terraces, where people go up there. They could see a whole backyard. They could see the whole -- I don't know. There's like seven, eight homes that are in that area. And they just could see everything. At night, I could hear voices. I'd call the police. The police comes over, and they just go back, further back into the hill and just hide. And then, until the police is gone, then you hear the voices again. I know there's only so much the police can do. But I was just wanting to ask questions on, how can we get that paseo that's between 1801 and 1820 Woodgate closed off to the public? Because it's -- we've been there since 1990, and there's always been problems with that back hill and that paseo. There's -- if you go back, there's graffiti all over the cement, the walkway, the walls. You know, when that project first started, it was a nice-looking area. It was really beautiful back there. You go and look out there, and there's a lot of greenery. And it's a nice, nice area. But now, it's just like an old alley from inner LA. It's really bad back there. And I was just wondering, what process do we have to do to close off that paseo and maybe put some gates on top where that was drainage terraces are? Because I took photos from there. You could see -- you could see so much from up there. You could see cars coming from the street. So, if officers are coming in response to your calls, they could see the officers coming. They just leave. So, I'm just -- I just want to know what we have to do, what petition we have to write up to try to get this paseo closed off. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Normally, I ask all my questions at the end of the meeting, but I'm going to go ahead and ask staff who -- if we know of an answer to who owns the paseos. City. I wanted to make sure that 100% of it is owned by the city. Okay, good to know. That may help. And that's the reason that I'm asking because there could be hours on city property. Because I have a park behind my home as well,[1582.83] Because I have a park behind my home as well and sometimes the gates get left open and kids go down there and party and noise and scream at 12 at night. And it's scary and nobody likes that, nobody wants that behind their home. So I think that that is a good thing. I also want to make mention that, and I just asked my colleagues if they knew about the situation and I'm so sorry, I had no idea. And, and so we'll move forward and see what we can do to help you. So we'll continue with the speakers as you come forward. Irene Torres Gomez?
Hello, my name is Irene Torres Gomez and my husband just spoke. We've lived at 1801 East Woodgate Drive for almost 23 years. And I always wanted to live in my home till we retire. I've always, I've been happy there, but lately it's been bad and it's getting worse and worse. And we still have a young son at home and now I'm scared for, I don't think it's safe for, you know, my husband put a basketball court in the backyard. We don't think it's safe for him to go out there and play basketball anymore because then there's guys, kids up in the hill, we left the passeos behind us and they could throw rocks at him. They, last night at 11 o'clock, they were throwing rocks in the back at our windows. And I turned on the lights back there, but I didn't see anybody. But all we hear is running through the passeo, people going with their little carts back there. Anybody goes back there, anybody, if you want to go walk back there, anybody can. We have no privacy. I could be doing yard work back there and people back there, back there smoking, drinking. They go up on the hill, drink, cuss, I hear cussing back there. It's not nice and it's not safe. I don't feel safe. My husband works nights, I'm home alone with my son and my father-in-law and I do not feel safe. When I call the police, they do respond, but sometimes, I don't know, they take a while to come and I, I don't, it's just really hard living there now. We're considering selling, but I don't think we can right now, so we're sort of stuck. And I just want the problem to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Irma Espinoza?
My name is Irma Espinoza. I've lived on Woodgate for 12 years. My name is Irma Espinoza. I'm a resident in the area. I've lived there for 12 years. I have noticed the increase, I haven't seen the violence myself, but I know my neighbors have. The crime has gone up. Just a couple months ago, I had my Avon, I'm an Avon representative, and I had my Avon stolen from my front door. I know another neighbor who is not here today had her mail stolen also. And other people's mail stolen from the area. So, I am concerned. I live alone, I have an alarm now because of that. I'm concerned not only for my safety, but for family members and my neighbors. So I hope that you take all this into consideration and listen to our pleas. Thank you.
Thank you again. Our next speaker is Robert Tegununa.
My name is Robert Tegununa. I live in 1821 West Covina and I've been there for two years already. And the first year, or before we bought the property, I found the, the neighborhood really nice. My house is just adjacent to the park. Open area, cool breeze going inside the, inside my house. It's really nice. I mean, I have nothing to ask for, basically. But then with the incident that happened in our neighborhood wherein there's like, I mean, burglary, there are some kids who are like, you know, roaming around the area. One time I noticed in my backyard that there is a bottle of liquor that is being thrown in my, in my yard. And I'm just really scared for my daughter and for my wife because she's an eight-year-old kid. And as much as possible, I forbid her to go to the park considering that our house is, is within just the area. I mean, she just needs to walk. So basically, we are here as a group, Madam Mayor, to support our ordinance that we're trying to pass. So we are hoping for all your help that we can get this so that our neighborhood will be safe again. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And I have a last speaker of Trudy Saltmarsh.
I live at 2809 Courtney Sorker, been there 41 years. I worked there, now I'm retired there. It's always been a wonderful place to live, so it's, it's just sad that now suddenly we're having more problems with crime in that area. Use, the passeos used to be a wonderful place to walk. I used to do it all the time before I developed an asthma condition that doesn't allow it. The park used to be a wonderful family place, now there's problems going on up there. I'm very concerned about this. I don't want to see my retirement home now destroyed or ruined for me. I'm here to support Mrs. Finley and her proposal regarding rentals. I'm also here to ask about the amount of low-income housing that is in the city. Are we approving more low-income housing than we need? Because unfortunately, I know there needs to be a certain amount. I'm not trying to shut these people out altogether, but if we get a disproportionate amount, it brings in an element that we don't need. So I think it needs to be a controlled situation. And that's, that's what we're here to say is, we don't want our neighborhood destroyed. And just recently, things have been going on that should not be going on. It was never that way before. So thank you for hearing me.
And thank you for coming out tonight. Is that all the speakers for that issue? I have one more. Your name?
Three more.
Oh, three more? Okay, I, is Jeffrey Weeks one of them?
That and something else.
Okay, all right. Well, basically, briefly, I know it's a non-adjourned item, Mr. City Manager, on the low-income housing requirements, is that the, usually the state's mandate? Is that correct?
Well, it's part of the state mandate and also part of our general plan where we have to provide more housing.
Well, more housing, but not necessarily low-income housing?
Low-income housing or affordable housing is mandated by the state.
Okay.
To answer the question directly, as far as are we required or requiring the development of low-income housing, the, the answer is, is no. The elimination of redevelopment eliminated some of the housing funds that was being used by the redevelopment agency to provide for low-income housing within our city. That funding has been limited by the state. We, we just recently approved an affordable housing project, which is not really classified as low-income. But especially for existing homes, it's difficult for a city to require any homeowner to, without any compensation, to restrict their rentals or the ownership to be low-income. So the, the answer is, is no, that we're not doing that currently.
I just wanted to make sure to get that answer briefly.
Was it, was it, was it a percentage, are we above or below the percentage?
We, there is different requirements throughout the state. In regards to affordable housing and what we call the inclusionary housing under state law and redevelopment, we've exceeded our, our numbers as far as providing low-income housing within our city. As far as arena numbers, regional housing needs assessment, we have not met those, those, providing for the number of units for housing in general. It doesn't really specify it has to be for low-income, but we have not met those numbers in providing for all those units. In fact, we have to provide for another, like 800 units in the next housing, housing plan update.
Maybe what I can suggest is that we have your number and maybe we need to meet City Manager and we can get all that information to you.
I'd be more happy to clarify that.
Okay, great. Linda Mooney?
My name's Linda Mooney. I live at 1721 Woodgate Drive. I've lived there for 41 years. I'm one of the first ones that was in this neighborhood where this family was robbed. There is constantly some type of robbery in the neighborhood. My concern would be, can we get maybe a closed officer that comes in and patrols the neighborhood of the night in a non-controlling car, you know? So we can get some undercover help maybe for them? And my second issue is resident parkside landscaping. I live at the corner of Woodgate Drive and my property is adjacent to Temple Avenue. The homes that are adjacent to Temple Avenue have a property line fence on the side of their home and outside of the fence is a green area and we all maintain it. Next to this, there is a public sidewalk, city or county, I'm not sure. On the outside of the sidewalk, there is a parkside strip that lies between sidewalk and the curb. As I understand this, this is considered to be an easement. I am not exactly sure what governing body actually owns the easement, but they have put the maintenance burden on the strip onto the homeowners that live adjacent to it. Many areas in the city have the same type of park settings and the city maintains them, but not this area. No water lines were provided in this parkside strip that is adjacent to the sidewalk, so nothing can grow during the heat of summer and only wild grass and weeds in the winter and spring. Some of the courtyard homes in this area that are adjacent were originally landscaped. I am assuming by the original contractors that were provided with sprinklers in this area. However, with more than one, a 100% increase in our water bills from 2011 to 2013, many can no longer afford to water this strip, let alone their own yards. This strip is the southwest entrance to the city of West Covina and there is a sign welcoming you into the West Covina. The boundary in West Covina sign is along Temple Avenue behind the residence of 1720 Woodgate Drive. I think that the city with, with the motto of West Covina Beautiful would want this entryway to look nice, like other parksides and mediums within the city, by the way, the city maintains them. I would like to raise a resolution, be brought up at this or at a future meeting for an agenda, that the city landscape this parkside with landscape rocks and imprinted style cobblestone cement as they have in the mediums along Azusa Avenue, Amar Road, and other areas in the city. This way it looks West Covina Beautiful and there is no burden for homeowners to empty their pocketbooks on high-cost watering they can't afford on this hardship economy. I would also like the cement strip medium that the two-way stop signs are mounted into the middle of Temple Avenue at the corner of Woodgate Drive at Temple Avenue also be landscaped with rocks or artificial stamped cobblestone style to match. And also around a new West Covina welcome sign as in the other entrances to the city. I know that there are sometimes extra funds that can be used for such projects when requested. I also have another subject, water bills. Possibly be put on a future agenda. I would like to have some research done on our water bills. The city sold the water company to suburban water company for profit, but for those of us who pay these new absorbent water fees, we do not see any profit. I am wondering if you have any power to help us with the new fees and high bills? If you look around the city this year, you will see dead lawns and dead landscaping all over. It is not from homes being repossessed, but from absorbent water rate increases and additional meter charges. 2010 to 2011, there was a 52.75% increase. 2011 to 2012, another 33.95% increase. And 2012 to 2013, a 3.25% increase, making a total of 89.95% increase. On top of that, the water offsets and taxes increased from $3 to $9.35 and the water meter charge went from 1412 to 1707, a 19.95% increase, bringing totals to over 110%. And that's not counting the 300% water offset charge, surcharges and taxes. As I recall, residents on the south side only paid an additional charge for their water when the city managed it. I believe it was intended for when the time came that it needed repairs on our side. This, these extra fees was never used and I'm wondering what happened to these funds? Should they not have been refunded? I remember Councilman Toohey suggesting just that at a council meeting a few years back. He said that these funds should be returned to those that paid it. Can you tell me what happened to it or please do some research on it so we may get some help with this problem? I have another item. West Covina Fire Department. Is West Covina Fire Department going county? I have heard this. I am requesting that all West Covina residents be notified by mail if this is being contemplated.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Speaker, see there are five minutes.
Thank you very much. On that, a couple things. One was that lot, if we can find out with staff who owns that and if that is the case, maybe put that into our landscaping if that's applicable. And on the water bills, maybe we can, I have her, Linda Mooney's information, we can get that information back to you so that you have that information. And on the county, the fire department, you can get that information as well. It's not, this council doesn't have the power to do that, so we can get her that information as well. And I have, I believe Jeffrey Weeks is also a speaker? Yes? Mr. Weeks.
Evening, members of the city council. Nice of you to allow us to come in and express our concerns. I too am a resident of 10 years in the city of West Covina. And being one of this group of neighbors that have seen a drastic increase in crime of the type that have already been mentioned to you, one of the areas that I see as being a good step to make would be to, with a street called Woodgate, to put some speed bumps on that street because what happens if you're fortunate enough to be in the neighborhood when it occurs, is there are a number of very loud sounding vehicles, both motorcycles and hopped-up vehicles that drive down Woodgate and if you're not awake, you're going to be awakened very quickly by those sounds. In other words, the neighborhood is deteriorating because, for example, lighting is not good in the passeo. There are things, steps that could be taken to maybe not eliminate, but at least alleviate what's going on there. Obviously, our neighbors with the break-ins and so on, you know, it starts out with something like that, but it can escalate because once these people are caught and prosecuted, then unfortunately, too often, they have their friends to come after, the people that have identified them and so on. We all know this happens and it, there isn't anything really you as a city council can do to prevent that, but we as homeowners and concerned citizens want to at least let you know what's going on in this particular neighborhood. Frankly, I doubt that it isn't going on in other neighborhoods, but you know, we, we who live in this, in the several blocks that are in the Woodgate area, just see things going on that we are powerless to stop unless we take the law into our own hands, which we'd rather not do. So I'm support, in support of this ordinance. And anything else, as I've mentioned to I, areas that you can do to make life a little safer for those of us who are proud of our community and want to see it stay as a safe place to live. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Is that all the speakers on that particular issue? Is there one more?
Any left?
Okay. I'm just gonna briefly say, adding to my mother may I, if we can also add possibly looking at closing off the passeos for hours of operation. I think that may be a solution and any other, you know, solutions, maybe we can meet with the residents beforehand. And basically what I have to say is, as time change, as times change, we have to change, unfortunately. And, and I'm very sorry that the neighborhood's having to go through that. I do have other speaker cards, so those of you that have filled out cards, I apologize. We will be getting to you momentarily.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
And Councilmember Sykes?
In addition to the closure, we also are gonna need signage to make sure if we're gonna, if we're gonna have it restricted, signage is very important so that we can enforce the laws.
Absolutely.
Such as no drinking in public and, and curfew hours, littering and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, so we have clear direction. And then I may have misspoke, maybe if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager, I normally don't do this to you, put you under the Resident Act about, asks about fire. Basically what the council has done is to put it out, so maybe if you could say that so I don't have anybody misunderstanding what I said.
So, you prefer to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the city council has entertained a request from the West Covina Fire Union to, to consider a feasibility study to determine the feasibility of going county. The council has approved that just to entertain and, to entertain the county researching what that cost may be. The council has not made any determination of whether they are gonna go with the county fire or not. We are in the preliminary stages. We have just updated, or we've just prepared the response that will be going back to the county in order for they can analyze and, and come up with estimations of, of cost in which I would, I would need to bring back for this council for further consideration. At this point in time, the city is moving forward as we have been the past where we do have our own fire department. And, and until that, this council has made any decisions to go otherwise, we, we still have our own fire department.
Okay, fantastic. And how are the residents gonna, can be noticed online as well as, do we have any other means of how we're kind of letting everybody know what's taking place in case they're interested?
They would be noticed online and also I'm sure that it'll, it'll be publicized in the newspaper as well, as far as articles. But it's, you know, I just want to point out that it's very preliminary. We, we have no idea where, where the county's gonna be on this and, and that we will, it'll be, most likely it'll be on our website and on the agendas whether they can.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move on. I apologize to those of you that have filled out cards and need to speak, so we'll move on. Carolyn Hamilton?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Carolyn Hamilton and I'm here to introduce myself to you as your geographical rep at the South Coast Air Quality Management District. I have provided each of you with a folder of information, not only about the district, but things that you can do to help us clean up the air. I also wanted to point out a couple of items in your folder and one particularly that we're very proud of is the 25th Annual Clean Air Awards, which we're hosting on October the 4th. And if you, or if you cannot come, one of your representatives can make this event, we'd really love to have you. It's our, you're our guest. So, all I need from you is to get your information emailed to me or you can give me a business card and let me know that you're interested in going and I'll make sure you get there. The other thing that I'd like to mention, this is something relatively new that we've started, I mean, we've been doing all along, but we've just made it. started, I mean, we've been doing all along, but we've just made it really public, and that is, every Friday, the last Friday, excuse me, of every month, we're having, and it's like an open house type of thing, where you can come and take a tour of the district, see what we do, how we monitor the air, and things like that. Can I answer any questions for you at this point?
City Manager, have my card here?
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Also wanted to find out, or to let you know, that we do events, we come out in staff booths, so if you have like health fairs, or wellness fairs, or things of that nature, schools, if they need somebody to come out to speak, if you know of something like that, a particular environmental group or something, please pass the word along that we have a speakers' bureau, and we're always available to come out and do these things. So unless you have questions, I'd like to thank you for your time, and have a pleasant evening. Yes?
Will you be staying until the end of the meeting, or?
I do unfortunately have to leave, but if you have my card, please give me a call. If you have some, something that you'd like to discuss with me, it's not a problem at all.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that. Our next speaker is Kathy Howard.
Sure sign you're getting old when you didn't hear what this mayor was saying. My name is Kathy Howard. I live at fourteen twenty-eight East Merced Avenue in West Covina. I want to thank each of the councilmembers for taking into consideration the ordinance that Councilmember McIntyre asked to be introduced. This is something that I think was a valid point. I think it's a very vital point. From the standpoint, we need to protect at least what we have, our home base, this building that went up and opened up in nineteen sixty-nine. If you weren't at the opening, you can see a lot of the pictures around the city hall. I ask for the support of all the councilmembers on this, because they think that this is something that affects all of the people of West Covina. I really sincerely thank you for bringing it up and for considering making an ordinance of the city of West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
Lloyd Johnson, resident of West Covina for over forty years, councilmembers and residents of West Covina. The statement I am going to make isn't about campaigning, it's about the facts as I see them. A lot of residents have asked me why I'm so upset with the majority of this council. The answer is: lack of transparency, lack of trust, lack of vision, and lack of leadership. Someone once said the first step in solving any problem is realizing there is a problem. Well, West Covina has a problem. First step we need to do is correct our problem in West Covina, is to replace the majority of our councilmembers in November. Next, we replace our city attorney with one who will look out for the best welfare for our city, and the taxpayers, and of West Covina, and not be so lawsuit happy. We elect new councilmembers with residents who have a vision for a better West Covina, ones who understand without an up-to-date general plan, we're never going to achieve the greatness back we once had. I wonder how many businesses have decided not to do business in West Covina because we don't have an up-to-date general plan. We need councilmembers who will stand on their own feet and not afraid to make a decision on their own. And having a certain councilmember tell you how to vote on anything isn't leadership, it's called being a follower. And we've had our share of them. For example, former-appointed councilmember Karen Armbrust. What a disappointment she was, a true follower of Councilmember Hurford. And like what happened at the last council meeting, Councilmember Hurford said he was for the project the D.C. Corporation wanted to put on San Bernardino Road, and without any regard to how the residents felt, his followers, Satello, and Sanderson, and McIntyre, jumped on the bandwagon, even though the residents said with a loud voice they were against this project. It just goes to show, when the developers give a lot of money to your campaigns, you owe them when they want a project, and they expect you to deliver. And the majority of this council did just that. They did deliver, even though this was a very bad project. All these councilmembers will say this was a very good project for West Covina. Let's ask them if they'd put this project in their neighborhood, in South Hills, which all four of them live. If they say yes, and you believe him, I have a bridge I'll sell you. The majority of this council lack the vision to get our city back on track. The only way this will be achieved is to replace them. I hope the residents of West Covina will finally see just how bad our city financial problems are, and come to realize that the majority of this council just doesn't have the leadership and the vision to move our city in the right direction. Their lack of leadership is why we're in the situation we are in now, not because we lost our redevelopment agency. They can use that excuse all they want, but it just isn't true. It's up to the residents of West Covina come November. We can either move forward with a new council majority and move our city in a new direction where we can achieve the goals we need to, to get our city back on the right track, or keep the same councilmembers and achieve nothing except for the same thing: lack of transparency, lack of trust, lack of vision, and lack of leadership. And proving they only care about developers and special interests. And the residents will always come last, you know? They've had their chance and failed. It's time to restore the trust in the city council with a new majority, let's start this November. This council can say I made these statements for one reason or another. The truth is the truth, and there's no hiding that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Forrest Tennant.
Madam Mayor, I'm Forrest Tennant. I live at seventeen forty-four Aspen Village Way. I'm here tonight as part of the organizing group that started the petition to require a public vote to sell any land here in the Civic Center. And I am here to thank you and compliment you for taking what the election code fundamentally says, which is if a citizen group does propose such a petition to be circulated, you have the option of adopting the ordinance. And again, I'm here to thank you and support your decision to adopt that ordinance. As you know, this issue has been the most contentious issue probably in this town since the BKK landfill. Started about nineteen or twenty months ago, and it's been very bitter, it's been very contentious, there's been recalls, petitions, distrust, and a lot of things that you're familiar with. And your action tonight, I believe, will put that to bed. This is a small town. We cannot afford to have this kind of contention, this kind of bitterness, and this kind of overwhelming argumentative situation. And so again, I thank you very much for doing this. I think in some ways, I was as surprised about this development as you are. It turns out that a great percentage of our citizenry believes this land in the Civic Center is rather sacrosanct. In other words, this land can't be sold, and what you've done here tonight is really take a compromise position, and that it can be sold, but it takes a public vote. And I for one could give you a couple of situations that I might personally vote to sell some of the Civic Center land to a private party. We could use a nice convention hotel, maybe a performing arts center, maybe some things like that, would convince the citizenry to take the step to sell some land that they've come to believe is sacrosanct. Now, why do they believe that? Well, I think we all know why. It's a quality of life issue. We don't want everything to be a concrete jungle, we want some open space, we want some breathing room. I also want to say that, I know I've been on the other side from you folks, and a lot of people have, it's time to bury that hatchet and move on. I don't think anybody can be blamed, because I recall a few years ago, there was no outcry when there was an attempt to sell Civic land, but there is now. And again, we have to move on with what apparently our citizenry wants. Let me say one other thing. Just because a huge number of our citizens, including myself, oppose selling Civic Center land, that doesn't mean that we're against developing the freeway or developing some other land. We must develop the freeway, and we must bring in revenue. I would also say this in closing. I'm well aware that the staff, and they've made their public comments, and we've all read them, that we need some money, we're a little short, right? Okay. We're a little short. Those of us who said, "Don't sell the land," better figure out some other ways to support you to raise some money. There's got to be a trade-off, there's no free lunch. And I'm very well aware that the selling of this land was to bring revenue into the city, no argument there. And so some of us who have opposed you need to stand up with you, and you've got to make some difficult decisions, which I suspect you'll have to make. Again, I thank you for your support. I thank you for trying to compromise. It's been long, it's been arduous, and it's been unpleasant, and I would like to say that all of us should shake hands, blame no one, walk away as good friends. We're a small town, we can't afford to have this acrimony. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Schumaker.
Just have a couple of questions, or actually a couple of comments. I was thinking about, you know, if this issue with the fire department ever comes up, how about a headline on Discover West Covina? Goes out to every home in the city. You know, if we can put a headline about a restaurant that's going to be coming in, maybe sometime in two thousand and fourteen, something that affects our fire department should be on the front page of that, real clear for everybody to see. The other question I have is, with low-income housing and affordable housing, what happens if the city goes, "Nah, we're not going to build any of that"? Does the city council go to jail? Do you go to jail? You know, that type of thing? I doubt it. I think what happens is the state just doesn't give the subsidies to make that housing low-income that goes to the developer. You know, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Another question I had was related to the refinancing of the bonds on the community center in Jim. When I was taking a look at it, it looks like we owe about two-point-three, two-point-four million dollars, but we're going to borrow three-point-two million? If that's correct, I'm trying to wonder where the other eight, nine-hundred thousand dollars is going to go. Are we going to buy new fire equipment? Plus, we're going to be paying back nine-hundred thousand dollars, plus the interest on that, plus we're going to be paying it instead of it being paid off in twenty-twenty-three, it's not going to be paid off until twenty-thirty-three, because it's going to be financed for twenty years. So I was just wondering about those items. The other thing that I need to ask is, you know, Madam Mayor, you know, does a good job, you know, wanting to be open with the citizens and things like that. But I'll send in an email, or I'll ask a question, and I don't get an answer, so I'll follow up with it, and, you know, Chris is good on following up with me, no complaints there. I actually got an answer on a couple of things from, I think it was, it might have been Shannon who sent some things back to me, answering some questions, and I appreciate that. But so many times, the answer is, "We're waiting for the city attorney to reply." Well, you know, one of the questions I asked was about Athens contract. Are they required contractually to pick up on special Saturdays during the month, or they do it out of the goodness of their heart? Seems like the answer is pretty straightforward and doesn't require the city attorney to get involved. It's either yes it is, or no it isn't. You know, when I said about the special twenty-four hour pickup, again, it seems like it'd be in the contract, yes it is, no it isn't. Pretty straightforward. When I asked about park fees, I got an answer that said, "This is how it's based." I went, "Thank you." Gave me the answer I was looking for. One other question that, you know, to kind of give you the idea, and I asked, I asked a question, I did ask it incorrectly, and Chris, you know, did a good job in pointing that out, that I asked for a listing of, there's a city ordinance that I read, I don't know if it's been reversed finally or not, where it said how you select a city manager, that you have to go to an agency that doesn't exist anymore, and another one that doesn't do the job. You know, and he pointed out, because I asked, "Where's the list of names?", and he said, "Hey, I can't give you the names, because that would violate their privacy." No problem with that, I can wholeheartedly understand that. But I guess the new question that pops up is, was that ordinance changed? And it seemed like, you know, I have to wait for an answer from the city, from the city attorney? You know, it's changed, I missed it, or it wasn't. Pretty straightforward. Regarding the proposed ordinance for the sale of, you know, land at city hall, again, I think it's a good idea, it's nice to see some things are in there, but I do have a question. I do have a question. Can that ordinance be reversed as easily as was put in? Because I know if there's a referendum, it can't be reversed by members of the city council reversing it, it has to go back to the people to yank it out. Now, if the city council puts this in, would they be able to, on November sixth, come in and say, "We're reversing it?", and it's effective thirty days later? If so, it'd be nice if you kind of added the piece to it, that take a vote of the people to get rid of it. And possibly if you could clear up, you know, one item when it says "an election". Is that a postcard election, a plane flying over with cameras and people are waving yes or no, or, you know, where the original ordinance was a lot clearer, it said "an election of the, in the city", you know, at a regular election schedule date. So if you could clear those up or add those items, that'd make it a lot easier for everybody to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bruce Steinbach.
Yeah, I just got, got home today, visiting my son, grandson, and his wife. I'll just say one thing, come back, go in my house. It's great to live in West Covina, it's my home, I've been here since nineteen seventy. Also, I had disturbance in my house, and the neighbor called the police, and they came over and checked it out. So that made me reassured that while I'm gone, the police is overlooking my property and looking over the property and the rights and the lives of the other citizens in our city. So we have a great police department. So I hear about this, this project, about the condo project, medical condo project, or the, what Mr. McIntyre made a proposal, that no longer, any more construction can be done on future projects that were proposed to the city. But that's okay, I think that's great. But I want to know about the current one. City council signed off on it, and is that one still going through, or is that being reversed, or what? But I, Mr. McIntyre, you made a good proposal, but it wasn't clarified. We got one in the, in the barn that got out, are you going to bring that back in and say we're going to keep it, or what? That's, that's what I'd like clarified. And another thing I'd like to know is this, like I'm in the real estate, you go out and get a listing, and one thing you go out and get a listing, you always get the signature of the husband and the wife. And if you get one signature, you're going to have some big problems. And the thing I don't understand about this, we had to develop this, and we had to get the cooperation and approval of the county. My understanding that our county representative, Gloria Melina, opposes this project. So the point is this, before we started all this development and everything, why didn't they first get the consent from the county that we're going to cooperate? Now they aren't. But I mean, I'm glad it's not going to go through, but from day one, why didn't we start out and get that approval? Secondly, I lived in the South area, South Hills area since nineteen eighty-five, and I remember about twenty years, twenty years ago, they developed about hundred and, about a hundred and seventy-five and about another seventy vacant lots now. And around nineteen ninety-nine, these all lots have been developed, and they went along, and they built homes on it, and all these homes now sell for over a million dollars. Now, we got eighty lots left, and right now, we have a builder who's paid cash, wants to build, he's, he wants to get going, he wants to start, can't do it because the city put a moratorium on the property. Also, another big developer wants to buy the rest of the lots and develop it, but we can't do it, the city's got a moratorium. Here it is. I don't understand. I've lived there twenty years, and here we get ready to develop, they put all these million-dollar houses on other lots, and now we can't develop because of a moratorium. It seems inconsistent, I can't believe it. And, and, and then, same time, we're developing all these condos, I think it's a hundred and thirty-five and six-point-five acres, and like we're jumping through the hoops. Here it is, an industrial area, incompatible with the rest of the area. I mean, Mr. McIntyre, you made a mention about Irwindale, but Irwindale's got property adjacent, adjacent railroad tracks, it's an industrial area, you, and no environmental pack has been, report has been filed, and here we are, jumping through the hoops to develop this property, and then we're putting a moratorium, a developing lots have been there twenty years. and then we're putting a moratorium, a developing lots have been there 20 years, and we could probably generate another $400,000 in city income for the income tax increase, because the homes have been estimated to sell between 1.3 and 1.5 million. That's to tax, increase our tax base by, by almost 100 million. And we'd probably get about 300,000 or 400,000 of that. That's much better than this condo project that was proposed, we're going to get 25,000. But the city hall jumped to get that approved, but here we got additional revenue, plus it'll make the area nice. Now, I've been there 20 years, I was thinking about myself, it was going to take another 20 years to develop this project, I was thinking, "I'm going to be six feet under." And, and, really, it's just not, that's why I'm upset. And here we are, developing these, and the density, you got, take a real quick look at the density, the density, the sole thing is, is 2,000 per unit, you go down and look at Woodbridge Apartments, look at all the parking on the streets, you don't have that parking here, and where are the people going to park when they go in this complex? I'm opposed to the complex, and I want you to get the development of South Hills to approve.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I just want to see their five minutes.
The change of the, with the moratorium is, go ahead and get this property developed, and not develop the condos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our oral communications portion of our meeting, and we move on to our consent calendar, unless there's any other items that need to be pulled on the consent calendar. Councilmember Sykes.
Regarding the public speaking, if we could just revisit that, there was a mention of the mail theft. Please, make sure when you call, the police also contact U.S. Postal, so that inspectors can be made aware of what's going on, maybe the design of the cluster boxes, or whatever your mailbox system is, maybe something needs to be addressed. So we need to make sure that the U.S. Postal Service inspectors get involved. Regarding the residential park side, I'm hoping that we can get staff to peruse the area, take a good look. There is some blight there. It's very evident when you drive from the Covina Hills Mobile Home Park into West Covina in a northbound direction on Temple, you can see that there's some property that is unkempt. I'll repeat, unkempt. And we need to address this issue, to make sure we clean it up, and as someone said, it looks uninviting. We want to say, deliver it to its name, West Covina Beautiful. And also, if we can get a little research done regarding the lighting of the park, I think that needs to be addressed immediately. The residents are concerned about, maybe we've lost some, some security that light brings at night when we have low light, that we can address the park lighting and see what's going on as soon as possible. I'm hoping that we can contact Mr., the Speaker Shoemaker, regarding the, the low-cost housing question that he proposed, what happens to the city when we say no? No more low-cost housing. When we say that, what happens? And then he also had questions regarding the Athens contract. I think that's important for every resident to be made aware of what's, what's happening with that. And we have the land issue coming up, there was a question regarding the wording of the, of the law, so I'll revisit that once we get into a discussion about the proposed law for the no sale of civic-centered property. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Satello.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to give this lady here in the front here in my cart, "I'm sorry, I didn't realize, and I wasn't invited to the meeting, I would have loved to come in the meeting." Mr. Sykes was invited, I never got a phone call about a meeting, or knew about the meeting, did they add, or you had that problem? But here's my home phone number, and here's my personal cell number, and I'll be more willing to work with you and let you know what we can do. But I was not notified, and I was not told by the staff about any problem out there. Thank you.
It pains me to hear you guys, the basic hell that you guys have gone through, it sounds like in the last few months, and I take it as a responsibility of ours, the utmost responsibility is, at least my opinion, is public safety. As, as a city official, I believe we're here to create an environment in our community to where our citizens feel safe, they want to come home, they want to walk around on the streets, they want to go to the parks, I mean, that's, in my opinion, the root of my job here. And I can let you know that basically, all my decisions are, right now, we're severely understaffed with our police department, I don't think that's too big of a secret. And in order to increase that staff, we need dollars, we need, we need money. And our city is very unique in that we've been able to operate pretty much since our existence on our property tax, our sales tax, and fees, and we don't have any special public safety taxes, utility taxes. We, as a community, have lived within our means for the last 90 years, and there's great pride in that, but at the same time, it's left us in a position right now where we're understaffed with our police department. So from my perspective, and from what I try to do up here, is this is a complicated job, and we have a lot of factors that go into it, but every one of them is directed towards how we're going to get more money, so we can get more police, so we can prevent this problem. And down where your neighborhood is, we recently went on a tour with Councilmember Sykes, and when we did a lot of the tour, we identified definitely some problems down there. And most of those problems, when I would ask, is that ours, were blight, but they were in, it was the border of county, where we were coming together with county, our city and our county, and we don't have jurisdiction in that county. I would love to be a part of you, as far as giving my, my voice, my name, for when we talk to the county, if you guys can reach out to the county, because truly, if you look and see how many tax dollars our residents have contributed to the county, and when you look at what the county around our, I ask, what does the county do for our citizens for all our tax dollars? We have our own police, we have our own fire. So I just look around, when you look at county streets, you can tell a county street from a city street quickly, you can tell a county neighborhood pretty quickly when you look at it, when you ask the question. So I'm here for you when it comes to dealing with that interaction, because I'm disappointed too, in how the county has treated that area down there that borders our city. And anything I can do to help out, I would love to, and just know that in, the basis of my decision is about increasing our revenue, so we get more police. Some people might not like the fact that we need more businesses or higher denser projects, but at the end of the day, it's my belief, so we can help us raise more revenue to achieve that. So I hope that helps out, and we'll hopefully figure this issue out for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sykes?
Just one point of clarification. The area where they are hoping to create the ordinance, the corridor on Amar, that's on Temple, north of Amar, that's West Covina. And so I just want to be abundantly clear that when they're talking about that ordinance, they're talking about areas that are in West Covina. And we did tour it, it's Nicky Court, Nora, just to go for the in-streets. And so that is West Covina, and we do need to address it. Just want to make sure that everybody knows and understands what we're talking about. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And for the residents that came out tonight, again, thank you. We are going to bring you back, and you'll be in contact with the city staff to come up with some ideas and ways that we can help you. I'm going to go down the list, because I usually do after everybody spoke, there's a couple of things I did miss, and I apologize. There was a question in reference to the gym and the refinancing bonds, maybe Mr. City Manager, or, you know, we can get that information to the speaker that requested that. And then there was a question about the law of what happens if we don't do this low-housing costs. In 2007, I actually voted no on our housing element, and, and I'm still here. So honestly, I'm okay. So I think that would be actually an interesting question for the state, but I don't think I have any other items, and I do need to move on with the agenda, so if there's any other further conversation, we can also follow up with any questions or other comments at the end of the meeting, under Councilmember Comments. So with that, I'd like to pull the consent. Is there any items being pulled, or do we have a motion is in order to approve the consent?
Madam Mayor, item three.
Three for pull, three for a separate vote?
For a brief discussion, and also, item seven.
Okay, we'll pull those for separate votes. I have a, need a motion in order for all items, unless there's any other items, would be item number three and item number seven for a separate vote. A motion is in order?
Motion, move.
Second motion.
Motion and second, all in favor of the consent calendar minusing items number three and number seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We have number item three, which is an ordinance for our adoption. A motion is in order to approve?
Madam Mayor, I think that we are remiss in going forward with this ordinance, which is a change of the code and the zone, the zoning. We're offering to change this from manufacturing and industrial to multifamily, high-density. As the speaker spoke earlier this evening, we have some definite issues that the public has begged, that we examine closely before we go forward with this dense project. There's the density of the project, there's the proximity to the train tracks, there's proximity to a, a company that has announced that they have a sequel matter that calls for an evacuation process to be imparted to certain distances around the facility. We have a traffic issue. These are just basics that beg for at least an EIR before we go forward. And then, as I point out previously, we have an issue of disclosure, in that they're, in the process, I think that at the planning department, things should have been disclosed as far as conflict of interest. And for us to go forward with this issue without sending it back to the planning department and getting focus done, making sure we have an EIR, and making sure that all full disclosures that need to be met are done. We know that every time we look around, we have a court case, and this is a court case that appears to be in the making. So I ask fellow councilmembers, please do not pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. At this time, this is an ordinance in which this was at our planning commission, this item, and was fully discussed, and then again, was at the council meeting, a public hearing for three hours and fully discussed. The majority of the council has voted to support the ordinance, and I would like to ask for a motion in order.
I move to approve.
Well, second motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Next item that is on our consent calendar, which is item number seven, which is authorization to proceed on bond refunding. Mr. City Manager, do we have a report on that, or is there just a separate vote that is requested, Mr. Councilmember Sykes, for the resolution?
If we could get the staff report, I'd appreciate it. I'm seeking to find out what we owe on that project. I believe it's the Cameron Center that we're talking about. So I would like to know specifically what we owe, and what is the interest rate that we have presently in place, and the new interest rate. So if you can get a staff report, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, can we have a brief staff report?
Yes, I'll have Nita McKay present a staff report.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We actually are asking the council to approve going forward, proceeding with the refinancing or refunding of this debt issue. The reason we are doing this is to take advantage of low-interest rates at this time, and, which will save the general fund, we've all talked about saving the general fund money in the short term during these tough economic times, and it will save the city in savings approximately $180,000 a year for the next 10 years, which will free up some savings. We can also take advantage of a low-interest rate at this time by extending the term of the bonds, creating savings to the general fund over time. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Councilmember Sykes?
Madam Mayor, what is the debt as we speak? Because if I understand, we're going to be owing 3.2 million after we make this arrangement. So what are we starting out as a debt?
I actually would have to research that, I don't have it off the top of my head, unless our financial advisor does at this time.
John, can I have you come up and answer that question, please?
Actually, the size, the issue that we see now, and again, you're not approving the financing, you're just approving the team, but it's, the financing is about 2.5 million. In the resolution, it's a higher amount, and we always do that, just to be on the safe side, that we don't want to get it approved at 2.5, and then you find that it's 2,505,000, and you got to do the whole process over again. So that 3.6 is just a not-to-exceed figure.
3.6? 3.2?
2.2 is the...
3.2, not exceed 3.2 million.
3.2, okay, excuse me, 3.2, yeah. The, the size we see right now, and are looking at it, is 2.5 to refund it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, a motion is in order to approve the resolution.
Move to...
A motion, that we go forward and approve it as is.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is our successor agency. I will recess the city council meeting at 8:29 PM to Covine, our successor agency meeting. And we have a separate agenda for that, so I will ask Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Chairman Sanderson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Herford. Board Member McIntyre.
Here.
Board Member Satello.
Here.
Board Member Sykes.
Here.
Thank you so much. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we have no cards for oral communications, so approval for our consent calendar, which is minutes, and the treasurer's report?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much. With that, adjournment is in order, a motion?
Motion, adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero, and that would be at 8:30 for our city clerk. Next item on the agenda is, under Mayor and Councilmember reports, I had requested the letter to Governor Jerry Brown, seeking direct funding for cities to address an impact that is going to be affecting our, our communities throughout the valley here with this AB-109. I have not heard from our, our agencies as to what they're doing and how they're doing that, other than releasing prisoners into our community. So can we have a brief staff report on that and get some further information?
Yes, I'll have Chief Lakamari come down here.
Thank you.
Brief presentation. But if I, while he's come walking down here, I just want to point out is that what you hear tonight in regards to increased crime within our city, this is a kind of result of the item being discussed here tonight as well, and, and the chief will go into more input as far as that, but it's, it's just not our community, it's all the communities within the state. So if the chief can help out.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and staff. In 2011 October, Governor Jerry Brown implemented the provisions of Assembly Bill 109. Assembly Bill 109 was as a result of two factors. One was overcrowded prisoners, overcrowded prisons in the state of California, and the second factor was the state's budget crisis. Over 17,000 prisoners were released in Los Angeles County as a result of AB-109. Over 17,000 prisoners were released in Los Angeles County as a result of AB 109. They were released prior to their prison sentences being served fully. The state transferred most of the responsibilities for these prisoners to the county, and so state parole, as we once known it, knew it, has been greatly diminished. And now the responsibility for monitoring these prisoners that have been released early from custody has been transferred to the county probation system, which is trying to grow to respond to that. The penalties for violating probation, violating parole originally were up to one year, returned to state prison, and now, as a result of this bill, people who violate their probation can be returned to custody for up to two months. The crime rate in California has risen dramatically compared to the nation, and scholars and experts and the LA County Chiefs Association, of which I am a member, believe that this is a direct result of the impact of Assembly Bill 109. Just in a nutshell, in the nation, property crime has been reduced in the last year almost 1%, whereas in California, it's grown almost 10%. Violent crime has been doubled, so the nation increase last year was 1.2%, and the California is more than double that. So we've seen a great, a significant increase in crime. Experts believe that it is as a result of AB 109. An interesting fact is that right now, they are, the governor has opposed this, but up to 10,000 more prisoners may be released in the state of California. Your letter requests the governor to, to provide additional resources so that cities such as ourselves are better equipped to respond to this influx of criminals and to, to deal with them on a crime basis, and also to assist the county in making sure that the people that are in our community are in compliance with their probation terms. I'll answer, any questions?
Any questions of staff? Of our chief? Thank you very, very much for bringing this forward, and I hope that with our support, we work together that we could do something, because, you know, as a parent, a mother, a resident of the community, it's, it's a big concern. And, you know, people get up here and, you know, get upset about different things, and number one is feeling safe in your home. And so my goal is to see what we can do, and, and, you know, the county, the state, because, you know, one of the things, they talk about penalties, and, and I'm not really familiar, because obviously it's not in the staff report, but their penalties is going back to prison. But I'm wondering if there's any, I know you may not have the answer to this, but financial penalties, and where those monies go. You know, I know that there's a lot of systems, even in your, in your traffic citations and different things, the city gets a very small little peanut out of this, this huge pot, and, and I think that's gonna have to change, because they're, they're forcing cities up against the wall. They expect the cities to do so much with so little, and, you know, where, where is that going? And so I don't know if you could answer that question?
Well, you're right on the money, Madam Mayor. You know, we're not receiving as much money as, as we should, and when people are not being held in custody for the period of time that they should be, then as they're released back into our communities, we're, we've suffered the same effects that brought them into custody in the first place. So we have not seen an increase. We received a, we receive a modest amount of income that is administered through Cal Chiefs in order to combat this problem, and, you know, that does come from fines, it does come from the state, but, yeah, in my opinion, it's, it's not enough money, and we appreciate the support of the mayor and the council in at least requesting the governor and, and seeing what additional resources we can obtain from the state. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. And, yeah, that's, that's it for them. Thank you so much. I actually wanted just to staff, they prepared a letter to, to the governor, and I'd even be interested in adding in here like a demand for some kind of a meeting. There needs to be some, we need help. I mean, this is just wrong to throw so much burden on the residents of the community, and I don't know if there's maybe other cities that would be willing to go with us on something like that, to, to meet, if, if that is a possibility. I mean, this is basically, in my opinion, just a start of, of what we need to do to, that's always been a problem for me, just even before I was on council, I've always felt that the cities don't get enough of, of the pot, the piece of the pie. I, I think that because we've allowed it, and I do believe that we need to stand up and say, we need, we need more, because you're taking, you're, you're expecting us to, to take more. So I don't know, I know it's a lengthy letter as it is, and if, you know, I do have a question for the city attorney. If we approve this tonight, can this letter be adjusted and then drafted back and forth? Because, I mean, I'd like to make a little, you know, a little bit of changes to it, but I don't obviously want to do that here tonight.
Sure, if, if the, the rest of the council has no objection to allow the, the mayor to make those changes, that's not a problem.
And then, I mean, I wouldn't even have a problem sending it to, to council for, you know, their blessing, but I, I definitely want to, you know...
And I might comment, too, that I know that the city of Pomona and three or four other eastern San Gabriel Valley cities are addressing this issue. So there's, there's an organization that exists.
Okay, well, is there a way that we can find out about that and get that, get back to us as a council and have a delegate or of some sort, and somebody can, you know, obviously, in numbers, we can be a little more powerful, so, you know, maybe we could just work on this tonight, and I don't know if would it have to be a Mother May I item that might have to come back?
Well, if I can, if I can suggest that you approve this in substantial form of what's being presented, and we can make some changes based on that.
Okay.
With respect to, there was an item on nine of, that you, that you approved tonight, which was a task force, the city joining that task force to address these issues as well. So the, the police department is, is being proactive in joining, in, in, in joining that task force, where we hopefully can get some funds to help us as well. And as we increase our manpower, we can also use some of those funds that we might be able to get through the county for that task force to address these AB 109 issues as well.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions of council? Okay. I will make a motion to approve and move forward with the items that we discussed tonight.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much for your support, it, it means a lot to me. Our next item on the agenda is our item number 11, which is Councilmember Andrew McIntyre in consideration of the ordinance requiring a vote of the electorate to, for approving sale, lease, rent, civic center property to private party. Do you want to present a report, or would you like to begin, Councilmember McIntyre?
Sure, I'll start with a staff report, and then I'll add my two cents.
Just real briefly, at your request, staff brought back the language substantially, and that was presented to us in the form of the initiative ballot. Staff is presenting with the ordinance here tonight for your consideration, and if you have any additional changes, we can also add that in here as well. So we're, we're following your direction to bring this back to you, and what this would do, the language that is being proposed is as listed in the ballot initiative, was to sell, lease, or rent any portion of land to a private party in the Civic Center of West Covina, which is a property bordered by the West Covina Parkway, Sunset Avenue, and Garvey Avenue. A majority of West Covina voters must approve the transaction at, at a regular election.
All right, this issue, since I've been on council, has obviously been very divisive in the community. That's why I, this isn't proof that I'm not a reasonable person when it comes to issues about hearing from the community and listening about the concerns of the community. Truly, if, if people are not aware, citizens, my, my background is in development, so I'm gonna be pro-development, and I spoke in favor of this project when it was originally brought forward as a citizen of the community, and I believe that a medical condo building was, was a good use for the, for the corner. However, I saw it was obvious that the citizens did not like that idea and really felt passionate about it, and after discussing it with a bunch of people, I realized, all right, it's probably not such a good idea. And to, to bring the community together so that we can all start talking positive about the good things that are going on around us, so that way, when we talk to our friends that aren't from the community, we talk about all the good things about our community and not all the things that have upset you, that's, at the end of the day, gonna bring the best benefit to the community. So logically, I was, came to the conclusion, it would probably be a good idea to pass an ordinance that would rest everybody's concerns about the intentions of any type of development here and the importance we place on this facility as far as it being a community property that everyone should have a say in, and also hearing some of the concerns tonight, I've heard about can this thing be flipped quickly in a, in, you know, November 6th, all of a sudden we come in here and change it? I, I would like to possibly add, or I would like to add to also maybe some language to change this ordinance that we have to have an election of the people to, so that really, concretely, I believe at this point, gives you our sincerity about not doing anything to this property.
Okay, we do have an add on that. I do have a question of staff in reference to the ordinance. Now, let me begin by saying, I think the Civic Center property is definitely important, and we should walk very cautiously when we do anything. And years ago, I had met with someone that talked about this corner, and we have the library, we have the police station, we have the courthouse, we have the city hall, and what I really wanted to see was a performing arts center, and I support that still today. I think that's something that our community really, really needs. So that's why I was hoping that that was encompassed in, in a project that came forward that became what others said when they were here early as contention. It's unfortunate that things became contentious. I would never want that in our community, and I hope that we can all work together, and that's the best way to, you know, have success. But I do have a question of staff in reference to the lease or rent of Civic Center property, because that would include city hall. And I know in the past, we've leased and rented spaces to congresspeople, or, you know, there's been issues. So that would be my only concern with this ordinance. I support it tonight, and I'll be very clear about that. I, I don't think it's a big, I'd, honestly, I'd like all city properties and parks to go to a vote of the people, because I, I've seen them dwindle, and, and honestly, I think this is something that may even reach out into the future. I don't want to see one of our parks sold or changed or anything. So, you know, maybe this is just a start on how we go about it, but I am concerned about the leasing and the renting, because I know we've had buildings within city hall. So I don't know if you have an answer on that item?
Well, just a matter of, I believe that when we read this, this language that was being proposed, it was to lease, to sell, lease, or rent any portion of land. So when we read that language, we did not believe that that included...
I got it, okay.
Building space.
Well, maybe we need to be clear, because I, I didn't understand.
So that's...
So, I mean, is there, does it say in here, land?
Yes, it does. It says any portion of land, and if, you know, if it's amenable to the proponents, you know, if we could put...
orders and order to prevent attraction involving the sale, lease, or pri...
Just clarify that excludes...
It just says to a private party, a property.
Portion of land, right here.
Located in the Civic Center, it doesn't say land.
It says, it says to lease, to sell, lease, or rent any portion...
Yeah, but that's not the ordinance, I'm looking at the actual ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't say that. It says, it says, property located in the Civic Center.
Yeah, if, if I can point you to where it says, section 2.2-500, voter approval required to sell, lease, rent of Civic Center property prior to entering a transaction with a private party, then the language says, which is actually verbatim of, of the initiative ballot, to sell, lease, or rent any portion of land to a private party in the Civic Center.
Where's it?
2.5, so...
But it in the, yeah, but it says, in, in the ordinance that we're adopting, it says...
That's the title. The title's not actually a part of the ordinance.
Okay.
In the ordinance itself, if you go down just about to the middle of the ordinance, section 2-500.
Okay, so we're covered, is what I'm asking?
You're covered. It says any portion of land.
Okay.
If you want to make it even clearer, you could put vacant land.
Section two, restriction of sale, lease, rent. Okay. Well, I honestly still would like it, the, the, the main body is usually what we read, and it just says, any property located in the Civic Center. I just want to make sure we're not talking about leasing and renting city hall offices, is all I'm concerned with. So if there's a way to fix that, or if you feel good with this language, then...
Yeah, I know, but if, if you feel more comfortable, where it says property in the title of the ordinance, you can change that to land, and it will match the body of the ordinance.
Yeah, can we do that? Because, you know, we're not gonna be here forever, so the future people need to see this and know that this is, was the intent, and sorry to be picky, but, okay. So that's all my concerns, thank you. Councilmember Sykes?
As pointed out by one of the speakers, we are involved in litigation, the city. The council has, the majority of the council, has voted to deal with an appeal. Can we get how this appeal and resolution, how does that mesh? How does it work out?
Well, I believe that that is an item that we should, that we should not be discussing in open session as far as the, the impacts of the appeal, but what I do want to point out, too, is that part of the appeal wasn't just about the project, it had to do about the entitlement of, of, of the city's council's ability to approve projects based upon the general plan. And so the, the issue of the appeal, you know, we'll need to bring this back, the appeal process, the appeal will need to bring back to the council in, in a closed session form in order to discuss further.
How long would, once we adopt this tonight, because I know it has to have, be read, how long would it be until it's enforce, enforceable?
It will, it will go to a second reading at your next meeting, and it'll go into effect 30 days after that.
Okay. Okay. With that, any other questions or comments of staff, or Councilmember Satello?
Well, I'm in favor of this ordinance. Like I said in the beginning, we're, we're getting 800-some thousand dollars for the property, I was looking at revenue at that time. I'll admit, okay, and I'll admit that maybe what I was looking at, and the residents said was wrong. I agree right now, okay, and we will do this. I'm a bigger person than that, and I will admit that I'll approve this right now, and I'm glad, you know, we heard it from the residents. Thank you.
Mayor, second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much.
Just for clarification?
Yes, sir.
When Mr. McIntyre started this, he talked about adding some language about an election.
A change, was that...
You want to clarify that?
Correct.
In the motion, and the maker of the motion to accept that change?
I would like to move, if I have to, to possibly, to add language that states, in order for a change of this ordinance to occur, that a vote of the people would also happen, not just for the sale, lease of the land would need a vote of the people, but also the change of this ordinance would also need a majority vote of the people.
Okay. Rather than going through the whole process, what I suggest is, is that what everybody understood what they voted on?
Yes.
Did agree with that language?
Yes, for that change in the language to be wordsmithed into the law.
When the ordinance is actually presented to you, next time, it will have that language in it.
Have that language, absolutely, okay.
But let's understand that everybody understands that that language was included in the motion, and it was included in what was approved.
Thank you.
And so the record should reflect that.
Record should reflect that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is item, which is our city council request for reports of studies, investigation. I do have Mayor Pro Tem Steve Herford's item, which I'd like to, I mean, I guess we could, it's seeking, I don't know if he wants to be here for that, but it's just really on the Mother May I, so if we have council direction to support it, we can go ahead and bring that back at the next meeting, and a motion could be in order, if that's necessary. So, council's pleasure.
I move for Councilmember Herford's request, seeking the city look into lighted crosswalks at Roland and Sunset, be brought back to a regular city council meeting.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And this brings us to the end of our council meeting, under city council comments. Anyone have any comments? Okay. You know, actually, I think I'm gonna talk to the city manager a little bit first, but I want to bring back on a, an agenda in reference to, if we're putting this type of procedure we just discussed in reference to Civic Center land, I'm kind of, want to do a little bit of investigation work on city parks and our open space, and how we can protect that from future, you know, development. I know we have a, a general plan, but that is always a concern for, think, all of us, so I'd like to bring that back to a meeting for a Mother May. And with that...
I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of, this last weekend, a couple tragedies happened to one former West Covina resident and a couple current West Covina residents. A gentleman by the name of Justin Sigmund passed away... And also, a former Navy veteran who, him and his wife, horrible tragedy, lost a couple unborn twins, and it's just, that's got to be the worst feeling ever to go through. So again, he's, him and his family are in our prayers, and I want to adjourn this meeting in their honor. Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn a second?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.